Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, January 5th. Our first meeting of the year. Welcome, everyone. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Ms. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Mensah.
Here.
Mr. Storned.
Here.
This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Before we begin this morning, I would like to just note that we do have a new mayor pro tem. Welcome to the spot grant. He'll be the mayor pro tem for the entire year. So and the first thing on the agenda is a proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Day Junior, King Junior Day. And we have Steve Mosher here from the Civil Rights Commission to accept the proclamation. Would you come forward? Okay. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's example and teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994, it is designated the King Holiday as a national day of voluntary service. And whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life of life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our residents together and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and others, and offers up opportunities for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas the city of Marion is committed to equality, social justice and greater opportunity for all people. And whereas residents of Marion, Iowa have the opportunity to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy on the King Day of Service, January 16th, 2023, by participating in service projects throughout our community. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a day of service in Marion and call upon the residents of the community to pay tribute to the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Jr. Day and throughout the year.
Thank you.
Do I have to say something? You get a picture here.
Yeah, you took care of everything I was gonna say.
Go ahead.
On behalf of the Marion Civil Rights Commission, thank you very much for the proclamation. And also, if you have an opportunity, it's Service Day on MLK Day. That's what he's been known for. That's one of the things that he's pushing. Is see what you can do for someone else, helping another member of your community and and trying to change how their their perspective is in in life. They may need someone to smile. They may need a pat on the back. They may be having a rough day, but take the time and you may change somebody's outlook.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside on the agenda for comments from members of the public on any item that is on the agenda, but not associated with a public hearing. So anyone here to address the council, please come forward. Okay, seeing then no one's coming forward, we'll proceed with the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F2, Resolutions 31091 through 31101. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F2, Resolutions 31091 through 31101. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section of the agenda, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention as follows. Item, the item D2, Resolution 31102.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention as follows. Items D2, Resolution Number 31102. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor of Resolution Number 31102, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention. I move it back to the mayor.
Okay, item E1, we've been asked asked to remove from the agenda, so we will not be placing that on the floor for discussion this evening. We'll move on to Community Development, F1. We have a public hearing this evening regarding the amendment to Chapter 176, the zoning regulations to establish Chapter 176.56 Architectural Design Standards and Site Development Plan Review. The public hearing is now open. And this is a continuation of the public hearing, which was opened in a previous meeting. Do we need a a review?
I could provide one.
Do you have a quick, just a quick update for people who may not be familiar?
All right, get my notes out here.
It's okay. Caught you by surprise.
No, that's all right. All right. Well, this is the citywide design standards. These are establishing new new design requirements for all areas of the community, all commercial office areas of the community that are not covered currently within the central corridor. So from McDonald, the old McDonald's to Walmart essentially. And then some of the planned unit development districts such as Metco, the Indian Creek Design Standards, the 13 to 151 Design Standards. These new design standards establish all the new material requirements. Getting away from your traditional, we see a lot of vinyl steel type siding and requiring higher quality building materials such as masonry components, cement panels, etc. There's another part of this is the site plan review process that will go for all the commercial districts in town. It will also extend to site plan review for the industrial or for manufactured sites in town as well. And then as part of that site plan review, you get the landscaping, parking requirements, etc. So it's a kind of all encompassing. This will, the site plan review and then building elevation review will go through staff review and then forwarded to the planning and zoning commission. The planning and zoning commission will make the final determination if the building meets the goals and intents of the regulations. It's really easy to sit there and say, yes, the the building has 80% brick, but does that 80% of brick look good? So the planning and zoning commission will, I mean, that design review board to sit there and look to see how that material is applied and make sure it's applied in a manner that does make some sense and provide some design aesthetics to the project. That is the final stop for a project in Marion now for all these areas outside of the central corridor. If there's an appeal, then that appeal will come to the council. If the developer or the applicant doesn't agree with the decision, he can appeal to the council, but essentially it, design review essentially stops at the planning and zoning commission with their with their final decision. So this will, again, this will cover all the areas of the community that we haven't had previous design standards on. I think it's been something that's been asked for quite a while.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. Is there, is there anyone here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure? Please come forward. Okay, no one's coming forward. We'll ask the staff if any comments have been received outside the meeting.
None for me.
Since our last last time we asked the question. Okay. All right, please note that for the record and we will we we close the public hearing at this time. Okay. We'll move on to the ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-25, amending Chapter 176, Zoning Regulations to Establish Chapter 176.56 Architectural Design Standards and Site Development Plan Review. Final consideration.
Second.
It moved in seconded to approve ordinance number 22-25, amending Chapter 176 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to zoning regulations establishing Chapter 176.56 Architectural Design Standards and Site Development Plan Review. Discussion. Okay, this is the final consideration. I mean, there's no discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 22-25, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next, we have a public hearing on the sale of city owned property located on the vacated 17th Street right of way between 5th and 6th Avenues. The public hearing is now open. We'll have a presentation by Dave.
Just a brief one to update the city council on this project that you saw on Tuesday night at the work session. As you said, this is a public hearing regarding the sale of the vacated 17th Street right of way located on the screen highlighted in red. The applicant has made a request to purchase this property. It's approximately 90 by 33 feet, 32 feet wide, 90 feet long. To purchase the entire former right of way to incorporate into his property to immediately to the east. The price per the per policy has been set at 28,000, I'm sorry, 28,000, 2000. Lost it. $2,430.43 subject to a 33 foot utility easement and hard servicing provided within one year of approval. As I had stated in the work session, the city council, typically we divide the properties in half. And each person, each adjacent property owner has gets their half of the alley. The applicant has expressed a desire for the the entire parcel, mainly for the ingress and egress from his property without the ability to acquire all 33 feet. He he loses that ability or it becomes very, very difficult. The adjacent property owner has requested that they be considered for their half. However, the recommendation is to sell the alley in its entirety, I'm sorry, the street in its entirety to Mr. Carner.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Do we have questions when they get to the discussion? Is there anyone here to address council on this item? Please come forward. Okay, sir, if you would, please state your name and address.
John Carner, 2155 11th Avenue. I own the body shop there on 17th Street. Just need the for parking for my customers and employees vehicles and soon as I get it bought, as long as I know right exactly where the property line is, I'll put a curb up. And I'll have a have a blacktop because there's utilities running under the road, sanitary storm sewer. So now he's putting cement in there and have to tear it up if something goes wrong. So but yeah, get on that as soon as weather breaks and I know right where to put the curb stop, you know, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who is here to address council on this item, please come forward. Okay. Have we received any comments outside the meeting?
I have not.
Just a request from Genesis Equities to purchase their half.
Okay. All right, please note that and we will close the public hearing. For the resolution, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution Number 31104, approving the sale of city owned property located on the vacated 17th Street between 5th and 6th Avenues, Marion, Iowa. And this is from Donald Carner.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31104, approving the sale of city owned property located on the vacated 17th Street between 5th and 6th Avenues in Marion, Iowa, as requested by Mr. Carner. Any discussion or questions? Steve?
Just a comment. I think in this particular situation, while it does seem like an exception for us to sell the entire property to one entity versus splitting it as has been requested. Given this particular situation, I am quite satisfied to sell the entire property to Mr. Carner for two reasons. One, in this, for this particular piece of property, I think Mr. Carner business will benefit from owning all of that land versus splitting it and half of it going to Genesis. And the second reason is I think the city has already greatly assisted the Genesis project, which borders Mr. Carter's property on two sides by already selling the north side of 17th Street to accommodate their project. So for those two reasons, I'm in favor of this recommendation.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 31104, approving the sale of city owned property located on the vacated 17th Street between 5th and 6th Avenues in Marion, Iowa. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention.
Okay, back to the mayor. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding annexation request from Fraser Land Investments LLC for property west of Mulberry Drive, north of East Robbins Road. Public hearing is now open and we have a presentation from Kesha.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kesha Billings with the Planning Department here at the city. Tonight is a public hearing required by the state, Chapter 368 of the IO Code regarding annexations. This is a considered a voluntary petition with non consenting properties. Consent in properties up on the map you will see in blue. Consent in acres is is over 32 acres totaling just over 88% of the annexation area. There are three non consenting properties totaling just over four acres, 11% of the annexation. And then right away totaling 3.31 acres, which isn't necessarily included for or against the annexation, but it is required to be noted that that is what is being annexed in as well. And so for a total of 40.03 acres being annexed into the city. I would like to note that there is an annexation moratorium that was approved in 2013 between the city of Cedar Rapids and the city of Marion. If you'll notice, the map on the left is Area C and a portion of the annexation area on in the map on the right is including that Area C. It will be included with this annexation. We have not had any objection from Cedar Rapids regarding the inclusion of that. Something to note with the annexation. Staff is recommending including a 10 year transition on the taxes, on the city taxes of the property, which is what the state will allow. That's an accident state will allow. And just to note that any established uses are allowed to continue as a legal nonconforming use. They would not be allowed to expand though. So any business, any operations that are done on a property in this location that wouldn't otherwise be allowed by city code are allowed to continue but not expand after annexation into the city. Any questions of staff?
Big questions, maybe they may be, there be questions during the discussion. So thank you, Kesha. At this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to address council? Either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. If you please state your name and address, and if you wouldn't mind, after you're finished, if you'd fill out one of the yellow cards down. Oh, you've done that already?
Amanda Madison. I am, sorry.
Take your time. You're fine.
I'm the property owner of 2698 East Arms Road and I am I don't want to be against this, but I am because it comes at a great harm to me and my family. I know she commented on the businesses and we do own and operate two businesses on that residence and this will not allow those to grow or flourish or change with market and and so that's a concern to me that in Fraser Investments, opportunity to flourish, my family is not going to be allowed to. And we purchased the property about five years ago with the intent for what we are using it for and we have a business plan that we are in the middle of executing and developing out our property with buildings that we need and such. And this will prevent us from continuing with what we've been working towards for the last five years.
Are you willing to take questions if anyone has a question? Is that, is that okay? Anyone have a question?
Yep, I do hear. Yes. What is the nature of the businesses that you're looking to develop and expand on your property?
So I own and operate poultry farm. We hatch chickens and ducks and we lay, sell laying eggs and such. So that operation will not be allowed to continue. I have purebred animals or purebred birds. One of the passions of mine is there's an Iowa blue chicken that's almost extinct. It's at risk. And so we've been working really hard to kind of get that brought back into you know, the poultry community and stuff like that. So that's one of the businesses on the property that won't be allowed to expand. And then my husband is a home builder and so that is our business use, occupation use that we have at our house that he will not be allowed to then expand his business either. We have plans that we had taken to Lynn County planning and zoning with our site map of how we were going to have our house built and placed with the accessory buildings and stuff that he is going to need to house his machinery and wall forms and all of that stuff that this will not allow to move.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thanks.
Go ahead.
I can't, I don't have a question on the your husband's side of the business, but curiosity on the poultry, we have an urban egg policy, right? Does that limit how many chickens and ducks you can have?
Our review of the urban egg, when Amanda had first called in, we're looking it up. Right? So our review of the urban egg is that urban egg is more towards agricultural produce and chickens can be an accessory use to that. So brewing of livestock is not meant to be the 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 full and intended reason of the urban egg, but more of that produce.
So when we allowed back in the day to the people could have chickens, it is at a lesser amount than what you're looking to expand. It's six. That's okay. I know at one point we were counting them in the community, so I wasn't sure how, I think, like, how many people had them and how many were existing or whatever, but it's individual can only have six.
Correct.
In the, within the city limits and you must have more.
Yeah, we have cut down to get through wetter because taking live animals through wetter is hard. I think I have 90 live birds on my property right now. We usually right now will be hatching chickens so that we can sell them in the spring. People like to buy layers in the spring for their backyard coops. So usually I have six incubators with 55 eggs each continuously running December through April. And then we sell chickens of various ages to meet demands within the community.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, Colette?
Yeah, thank you for coming up here. It's hard. So appreciate the courage. Can you talk a little bit about, I heard, I think I heard you say that you have taken some plans in front of the county planning and zoning. You can talk a little bit about that and where that, where that was in the process. And when you talk about your, I think you said your husband's business, that there was some growth and sort of what the timeline was for that particular growth as well.
So when we purchased the property, we had taken site plans to in front of Lynn County planning and zoning for the placement of our house and kind of it's designed in a shape to allow for a rather large outbuilding. The garage has been built for you to do a drive through and the concrete's laid and all the electrical and powers ran for that building to go up. Because my husband is a home builder, he's been doing all of the building on our property himself. So it just takes us some time. We're also self financed and currently all of our funds are in the middle of a house build in Cedar Rapids. So I need that to sell before I kind of have funds to move forward with the last piece of our plans, which is the accessory building to go in the back there. My understanding is with this annexation, if my husband needs to purchase larger equipment, we won't be able to house the larger equipment on the property. If we need to purchase like an additional vehicle, business vehicle or something to that effect, we can't have that on our property. Like we're limited to the equipment that he has right now for his, so he wouldn't be able to be more than what it is now. Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, okay. Is that, is that it? Do you have anything else to add? Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, and we'll ask if we've received any other input outside of this meeting from others.
I have that.
Okay. Dave or Kesha, sorry.
I had noted in the staff report that I had talked to Amanda previously, and there was also Nancy Jacobs DeSotelle that had spoken with me early on when the annexation notices were coming out and she was opposed to the annexation.
Okay. Please note those for the record and we'll close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 31105, approving annexation requests from Fraser Land Investments LLC et al. For property west of Mulberry Drive, north of East Robbins Road in Marion, Iowa. Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve Resolution Number 31105, approving the annexation request. Been moved in seconded to approve resolution number thirty one one oh five, approving the annexation request from Fraser Land Investments for the property west of Mulberry Drive, north of East Robbins Road. Okay, discussion? We'll start with Grant and then Colette. Go ahead, Grant.
Okay. Kesha, in those kinds of situations, people that have an occupation that is, that is situated on the property that they own, that is encompassed within the annexation. What are, what are our current rules relative to continuance of that, those business endeavors on that property?
The legal nonconforming status that is granted to them upon annexation allows them to continue the use of their property. And so as Amanda alluded to, her husband having certain vehicles on the property, you know, if he's got maybe one employee showing up to the property currently, he can't have two or three showing up to the property, right? He can still continue to have the same level of, of business as he has now, you know, so if he has an excavator out there, a dump truck, a dump box, you know, I mean, certain, certain things that he needs to do his livelihood, or it comes and goes depending on where they're at at the job site, and there's that expectation that comes with that. He can continue that use but not expand. So when he starts bringing two dump trucks to the property and an excavator and a skid loader and something else for, for the continuation or the expansion of his business, that's, that's where kind of the, the line is drawn for that. Likewise, the hatching of the chickens, the Madisons have, you know, an understanding of where their, where their hatching operations are now, understanding that that wouldn't be allowed to grow. They, they wouldn't be allowed to have another incubator or, you know, a hundred more chickens anticipated year after year.
Okay, so in, in sum, the current scope and extent of business on the property would be permitted, but expansion thereafter upon annexation would not. Is that the way to summit?
Correct. And the way that the legal nonconforming status works is that if they were to sell this property, it would continue with the property. Again, there is a use that is on the property existing at annexation. It continues from property owner to property owner. It doesn't necessarily just stop with them. However, it is again limited to the extent that it is upon annexation.
So if, if it, quick question, sorry. If, if it wasn't annexed in, like, what does that mean for the project overall?
My understanding, speaking with the property owners specific to the Madison property, is they received a conditional use permit for the home occupation. And so our, our guidelines for an accessory structure in the rear yard would be up to nine hundred square feet. What they're proposing and wanting in the county and what was part of their conditional use through the county was a three thousand square foot shop for the construction business. And so that's well beyond ours. They could seek a variance once annexed into the city, but unfortunately, you can't have the variance go to the zoning board before annexation. So I mean, that, that could be an option for them. It's a significant ask for that. As far as chickens, they do, it's my understanding that they have an egg exemption. And so again, in Lynn County, I think that there's some leniencies with egg uses that as far as I've understood from the applicant, there's not, in my conversations with planning staff and health staff, I don't know that there is a limitation on their hatching operation.
So i- if, let me follow up question, see if I can ask it differently. Thank you. So if we don't annex any of this in, that's my question, right? If we were to say, we don't want to annex any of this in, how does that impact the overall sort of Fraser property, Fraser Land Investments and all of that?
I, I would say he's made the investment in the land for the intention of developing it, and so he would be out those dollars.
Kesha, you may want to mention that he could annex the Cedar Rapids as well, but no, that's right.
He could. Nope, David's right. So this is area C, right? So
But it doesn't change the fact if he was to annex his, can you go back a slide, Kesha, maybe? I'll let you explain. If he's, they still be forced into an annexation because it's an island.
Yes.
Right, so that was going to be my question. Could you point out what is it, Amanda's property?
Oh, yes.
Which one is?
The red one in the middle.
That one, okay.
Any, any one of these by annexation of Fraser's property, any one of these would be island, because this jurisdiction below is Cedar Rapids. So everything south of East Robbins Road is Cedar Rapids.
It's already annexed into Cedar Rapids. Okay. So the only thing that isn't. Okay. So, but the property to the east of this, of that, of that property, that's also still counting, that's part of the annexation?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a non consenting, consentings, non consenting, consenting, non consenting, and then consenting. So it's
And to the north, sorry, and to the north is Marion.
This gray, yes. And then again, south of East Robbins Road, my apologies for not having on that, on there, south of East Robbins Road is Cedar Rapids. And then Meadow Knolls is county, and so that's, that's where you get this county. The, the white area on the map is, is county jurisdiction. And so, yes, David's, David's correct. Fraser could actually technically, no, Fraser can't annex, he could annex into the city of Cedar Rapids, but we would still have to annex this, the properties in here, because again, essentially any annexation he does, whether it's to Cedar Rapids or to Marion, this is created as an island.
But that could go to Cedar Rapids.
The, actually, the Madison's property and east, just for clarity of boundary lines. I, I think ideally that would be the line to come into Marion. That is noted as you'll notice on the, on the map on the left, there's this little white area that would be area B intended to come into the city of Marion.
Okay. Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, this isn't far from where I live, so I'm pretty familiar with the neighborhood space, but I'm going to ask anyway. With the expansion of Tower Terrace coming across, even though it's to the north of this. But this is a residential, there is, is there any zoning that's outside of ag or residential? What's the nearest non ag or residential zoning in this space? Like, we're, we're in a pocket of very residential area.
Yeah, I mean, so developed commercial, I mean, you'd be looking at Tower Terrace Road east of Albernett Road. We do anticipate some neighborhood commercial closer to Albernett Road. On the west side of Albernett Road, but that has yet to be, yet to come about.
And then I was trying to track the conversation on the, I mean, to be on the chickens, I actually tracked the other conversation, but with Colette's question. So there is a process on both the commercial side with the construction company. And then the ag side, that potentially there could be exceptions made for them to be able to, after an annexation, expand that, but there's extra steps they would have to do on both for a waiver or a variance. They could get those with the chickens or not? We don't know.
Uh, the, the building itself could get a variance for a conditional use for the building itself to go, you know, surpass the nine hundred and go to the three thousand square foot building. However, the use is a nonconforming use. It's, it's the construction business isn't allowed as a home occupation, nor is a commercial chicken hat, hatching operation allowed as a home occupation. So I don't I'm not so sure that I'm aware of any additional measures that we could find relief for. Okay.
Kesha, to the east of this, of the, the property, there are three lots in blue. Three parcels, four, sorry. Those are consenting, those people want to be annexed?
So yes, I think I noted this on Tuesday, if not maybe at my last presentation. And so there are, when we do county subdivisions that are within two miles of the city, we do have a note in there at such time the city require or request you to annex, you will annex voluntarily and all four of these property owners. So this is, find my mouse here, this is Wick's property, there's a Freylinger property, and then cops own both of these, and so they have signed that petition. Benders over here, they own two properties. Again, they were part of Jacob's Edition that was previously annexed in the, in the county. They were also, again, in, in with the agreement, they signed the petition. And so the Jacob's property is what split off the Jacob's De Sotelle property and the Bender property.
Those properties can't be annexed in on their own because it would create islands.
Correct.
I mean, it all has to come together or, or you leave islands, which you can't.
Correct.
Okay, Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm doing a little eyeball ping pong between your illustration and Google Maps. And so was, was it Amanda who spoke? Okay, I'm sorry, I kind of poor memory at times. Is, is the, I think there's a new home there on East Robbins Road. Is that, is that Amanda's home and property?
Yes, that's how she was referring to in conversations with her. They've, they've built the house to East Robbins Road to, for, to allow for kind of phase two of the, of the additional shop.
Okay, that I, what I was trying to do is get a, get a, a reference point relative to how this is displayed on, on on the Google Maps. Is, I, I guess maybe just, I think the question's already been asked. I think Colette got to it, but let me just ask this again. Is there any pathway post annexation as requested? Is there any pathway to allow them the ability, the variance, in order to continue their business and business plans as they have defined and obviously have made a substantial investment in the property by building this new home? What I'm, what I'm really trying to understand is, is are we up against a hard deck, immovable set of rules?
From current staff's interpretation of the code, I'm, I'm not so sure there is. One option, which I've discussed with a property owner, is we, we had this with the North Tenth Street annexation in two thousand, I think, fifteen. In the middle of the annexation process, a homeowner did go to Lynn County and get a building permit and had substantial completion of the building done before it annexed in. It's my conversation with, with a homeowner that getting those steps in place, and from staff's interpretation, it would be at least footings in the ground. So I mean, so you, you go through Lynn County planning and development to, to get your building permit for the three thousand square foot building, and then you'd have to have at least something. I mean, having a, having a building permit isn't sufficient enough for staff to say this, this is it. I mean, it happens more likely than we'd like to say, but so from staff's position, what we've done is they, you know, footings in the ground, something substantial, something in place to allow the building to, to continue under county permit after it's annexed.
Is this, this area isn't included in our comprehensive plan? It is? Okay, so what is it shown under our comprehensive plan?
Single family residential.
Is residential?
Yeah.
So when the applicant, when, not the applicant, the complainant, when they bought the property, which I believe was five years ago, she said?
My understanding, yeah.
Like, that was the case then? I mean, that would have shown as being intended to be single family residential?
Correct. And they did get the permit for the home occupation. You know, it's my understanding they're not trying to do, you know, a, a separate commercial yard. It's
No, I get it, yeah. Just um, okay, any, anyone else have anything? I, I think she wanted to, to, but it's, it's out of order, but I'll, it's okay. Come on, come on forward, and if you, if you just had one brief comment, that's all right. Yeah.
I don't know exactly what you're referring to for your comprehensive plan, but prior to us purchasing the property and prior to us starting the build, build out of our property, we did call Cedar Rapids and Marion both, and they said that they had zero interest in annexing our property into either city, so we felt that it was safe for us to move forward with what our plans were. And I, I understand things changed, but we did call and were told there was no interest in annexing us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I'm clearly beating a dead horse, but I just want to make this crystal clear. It sounds as if in Marion, we currently don't necessarily have a choice regarding the annexation, because if we don't annex and Cedar Rapids annexes, and then we're required to because there's an island, and we can't have an island based on state law, is what I'm hearing. And then I'm also hearing that there really isn't a path after that annexation happens for the current owners to grow their business. There is sort of in this in between phase before anything kind of happens, if they get footings in the ground, right? There's this sort of period of time in order they could do that, and then make them expand. So I think that's the, that's the unfortunate part is, is it seems like our hands are a little tied in this, and I hear what Amanda has to say, and it's, it's frustrating. So I appreciate giving us all the information today. Thank you for that.
Well, go ahead.
Kesha or Dave or the planning department, have any, has anyone seen the plans that they took to Lynn County that were approved by their? Nobody has?
Ryan, did you have something to add?
I was gonna I don't want to cut short counsel's deliberation on this, but one thing that, that Dave and I were talking about in the back room is, is perhaps that we can table the public hearing and allow us to have a little bit more conversations with, with our, our resident here and, and kind of talk through some of those options. You know, there is a pathway and from, from staff's perspective. And I want to be careful because any, any sort of zoning process is a quasi judicial, so it's, it's very based on, based on legal and facts. But one of the things that would play to their advantage as part of a petition would be the fact that it is a legal nonconforming use, not legal, nonconforming plot of land that's been annexed in, and that does become a basis for a petition. So I, I think it would be beneficial if we could spend a little bit more time speaking to, to the resident and, and kind of perhaps take a look at the, the zoning code in a different way. So if we just had a little bit more time, I think that would be helpful. I certainly want to be respectful of the petitioner that has, has requested the annexation. But given the, the commentary here during the public hearing, I think that's, that would be a, a benefit for all.
Anyone else? Okay.
You know, I'd make a motion to table resolution where we had three one one zero five approving the annexation request from Fraser Land Investments LLC for property west of Mulberry Drive, north of East Robbins Road.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to table resolution number three one one zero five. Discussion on tabling. Whether or not we should table?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I, I think this is the proper move. It just seems to me there's a bit of additional homework to be done on this to give clarity and certainty relative to the inputs to and certainty relative to the inputs to our decision. So I think this is the right way to go.
Other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of tabling resolution number three, one, one, zero, five? Please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved and the matter is tabled. Um, to appreciate everyone's time and uh, work on this. It, it, you know, this, this is not an easy situation and, um, you know, it's, um, I, I realize that, the city may not have had an interest in, uh, forcing an annexation, but you know, it, it's, it's land that is that is, um, slated to be developed as residential. Um, so you know, whichever decision you make, you're, you're impacting so, some, a landowner. Um, so, uh, for a little more time and, um, looking into it, uh, helps, that'd be great. All right, uh, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Uh, we have a public forum at this time for comments from the members of the public on any item. Uh, anyone here to address counsel, please come forward? Okay, uh, we'll move on to council comments. I will start this time. I want to thank, I want to welcome the new mayor pro tem, and I want to thank Will Brandt for serving as mayor pro tem for this last year. Uh, my practice over the last seven years has been to, uh, rotate the mayor pro tem position to give all council members opportunities to serve in that capacity. And Will did a great job this last year, so thank you, Will.
Thanks.
Okay, now we'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Randy.
I don't, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Happy New Year to everyone. And then, uh, Facebook popped up today that today, seven years ago, the mayor was sworn in. So happy anniversary on, happy seventh year anniversary on being the mayor. You're an excellent.
You noticed all the gray hair since seven years ago?
Picture, he had bra- he had black hair. He looked way younger.
Thank you.
Well, ju- just a ques- just a question, Your Honor, uh, really for Will. Will, please tell me you're going to be deputy mayor pro tem still? Really? Oh, okay, good. All right, thank you. Happy New Year all.
Okay, thank you all for joining us. Happy New Year. And we will, uh, take up the closed session, uh, motion at this time.
May I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under the Code of Iowa. We'll ask for the legal counsel statement.
Your Honor, I've reviewed this matter in detail, and it's my legal opinion that whereas the subject matter of the proposed closed session concerns a matter presently in litigation, and where counsel's purpose is to receive advice from legal counsel and discuss strategy with legal counsel concerning that matter, that the closed session is lawful under Iowa Code section twenty-one point five one C.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Spencer?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned to closed session.